Good evening, White Marsh. I'd like to call our White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting for April 8th, 2020 to order. J.C., would you like to begin with the pledge?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Fran, would you like to lead with some announcements?
Sure. Thanks, Laura. Drug Take Back Day is Saturday, April 24th, from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. at the Police Department. A drug take-back box is also available in the Police Department lobby 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Calling all Enviro-teers, the Well Street Open Space Cleanup will take place this Saturday, April 10th, from 8:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. Volunteers will be provided with their own shirt, tools, trash bags, and gloves. We encourage everyone to wear long pants, long sleeves, sturdy footwear, and a hat. The group will meet in the parking lot across the street from Cedar Grove Park. Want to let your furry companion join in the vaccine craze? Take your dog or cat to Elmwood Park Zoo in Norristown on Sunday, April 11th or 18th, between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. Pet vaccinations, microchipping, and heartworm shots for dogs will be available. Dog licenses can also be applied for at this event. Please consider bringing a pet food donation with you. That's all.
Thank you. So the next item that we have is a proclamation for the 2021 National Libraries Week, and this is super exciting. We love our library and all that they do. There is so much that they do. So I'm going to take a moment to just read through this proclamation here. Whereas today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities and not just about what they have on their shelves. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and academic campuses. Whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing the resources and space to engage in lifelong learning. Whereas libraries offer equipment and professional staff support to help utilize technology, programs, and services, often free or with nominal charges to users. Whereas libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas we recognize libraries as information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. Whereas libraries thoughtfully develop collections and programs that are wide-ranging and explore the diversity of our changing society. Whereas the PA Forward Literacy is Power Initiative highlights how libraries and staff encourage literacy in basic information, civic and social, health and financial, which contributes to greater personal and community success. Whereas libraries, whereas America is celebrating National Library Week, including April 6th as National Library Workers' Day and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers. April 7th as National Bookmobile Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location. And April 8th as Take Action for Libraries Day, encouraging communities' support for libraries. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors proclaim National Library Week, April 4th through 10th, 2021, in White Marsh Township, Montgomery County. During this week, we encourage all residents to visit the William Jean's Memorial Library and Nicholas and Athena Carabot's Center for Learning and explore all that they have to offer to help move PA forward. So I'm thrilled to share that with you all. And Rick, I don't know if you have any further comments or if we have anybody from the library here?
I believe the library director, Lisa Clancy's on. I don't want to put her on the spot, but she certainly is on.
That's okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate the proclamation. It's a great week, but it's also a great year. In looking at our records, we realized that with all the craziness last year, we missed celebrating our 50th anniversary here in White Marsh Township. So we're very happy. We'll forego the gold gift and we'll accept a new first-year paper with this proclamation, but we're looking forward to another 51 years. Thank you.
Wow. Thank you, Lisa. It's very hard on Zoom. I think I feel like we all should clap, but it kind of doesn't have the same impact here on Zoom. We're half, yeah, Sean's, there we go. Okay. So the next item on our agenda is to introduce our police officer, Kyle Mason. Chief Ford, would you like to do this?
Thank you for this opportunity. At the beginning of March of 2020, the White Marsh Township Police Department started the hiring process to replace one police officer. Almost as soon as the hiring process began, the COVID pandemic became a recognized global crisis, and the nation went into social distancing lockdown. Applications for the position were still received, but the deadline for applications was extended to give applicants the opportunity to adjust to the new normal and to properly and safely file their applications. The original deadline was extended from April to May, and the entire hiring process was revamped to allow for the process to be safely run. As the field of approximately 100 applicants was reduced through application review, the MOPAC approved physical agility testing and our own oral interview. An outstanding candidate for the position was identified. Finally, after a thorough background investigation, a physical and psychological examination, in early November, Kyle Mason was offered the position of probationary police officer with our agency. Kyle Mason is a graduate of Satterton High School and the Philadelphia Police Academy. Kyle had successfully completed the Municipal Police Officers Education and Training Commission's Certification Examination for Police Officers in Pennsylvania and was employed as a police officer with the City of Philadelphia for two years, assigned to the 19th District. Immediately out of high school, Kyle completed a three-year electrical apprenticeship with the IBEW Local 98 Electricians Union. Kyle Mason is single and resides with his girlfriend of three years in Philadelphia. Kyle officially joined the White Marsh Township Police Department on December 7th, 2020, and was sworn in by the Honorable Deborah Lukens, District Justice of White Marsh Township, on December 8th, 2020. Kyle's assigned to the Patrol Division and is currently working his way through the Field Training Program under the direction of Field Training Officer Vince Monday and Patrol Sergeant Craig Coven. I thank you for the opportunity to introduce Officer Kyle Mason to the board and to the residents. Normally, we would do this in person, and Kyle would be able to be here with his family and I'm sure his girlfriend and whatnot, and we would have his swearing in. Kyle is with us tonight. As luck would have it, Kyle is working day work, so Officer Mason is with us. And if you have anything for him.
Well, I'd like to say welcome, Officer Mason. Congratulations. We welcome you to our team and are here to support you in any way. Don't want to put you on the spot, but you're certainly welcome to say a few things if you'd like.
No, I just want to say thank you. I appreciate you saying all that, and I'm extremely happy to be here and I hope I can make everybody proud with the years of service I can provide. So, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right. So moving on, we don't have any public hearings tonight. I'm going to move to the minutes. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from March 11th, 2021?
Some of them.
Second.
We have any board comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Great. Motion carries. And we're going to move down to our resolutions. Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-15, authorizing the township manager to submit all future traffic signal maintenance agreements and permit approvals to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation?
Some moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is a good thing. PennDOT is actually looking to make things a little more efficient for us. I'm going to turn it over to our Township Engineer, Krista Heinrich, who will explain what we are doing with this resolution. So with that, Ms. Heinrich?
Good evening. Yeah, as Rick said, this is a streamlined process. PennDOT has started this year. Instead of requiring each time we change something with an intersection, the passage of a new resolution, they're doing a one-time process where you would authorize Rick to sign those future agreements without needing to get a resolution passed.
Wow. Okay. All that and just a quick little statement. So I think this makes it for a more efficient process is what it sounds like.
Sure. Yep. There's nothing particular. This just covers every intersection. It's not a particular project, but just a global change.
Excellent. Do we have any board questions or comments? Any public comments? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Miller, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Mr. Manuel?
Yes.
Mr. Drosner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes. Excellent. Thank you. So the next item is big, and I'm super excited. Actually, it's hard to even know how to start this. "It is with great relief, excitement, and gratitude that I introduce this next item. The township has always hoped that it would be able to purchase or in some way protect and honor the historic Abolition Hall and its surrounding property. Not that long ago, we were looking at a townhouse development at this site, 67 townhomes, and now we're considering tonight a new path that has at minimum the opportunity to protect the hall, associated buildings, and lands." I'm actually getting choked up reading this. Tonight's vote is one step. It's step one. There will be many more public opportunities to discuss the how and what this all will look like. But tonight, we're beginning this step to be able to have future opportunities here, and there's so many potential things that we can do. I want to take a moment to highlight how unique and out-of-the-box, how collaborative this all has been, and say a huge thank you to many people. The Corson family for helping us preserve their family's history and our national history. To this private donor, without them, this would not be possible. To Rick Miller, our township manager, who had the initial idea to involve the White Marsh Art Center and our staff. To our Solicitor's Office, for all of their hard work, Sean Kilkenny and especially John Walco. To the White Marsh Art Center, our new board there, and all the board members for their willingness to be involved in this project, and certainly my colleagues on the board, our residents. This is a big night, and I am very hopeful and very thankful. So I've said enough. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kilkenny to take it from here, and then Mr. Walco.
Thank you very much, Chair Boyle-Nestor. Just, it's a pleasure to be discussing this this evening. Before you, on the Board of Supervisors' agenda, is a proposed agreement of sale for the Corson Track, which of course you know includes the buildings, the building located at 1 East Germantown Pike, the Hovenden House, the building located at 4006 Butler Pike, the main house, and the building located to the southeast of the main house, Abolition Hall, and the building located at 14 Marple Lane, as well as all of the open space on the property, which is close to eight acres. So as you know, and as you stated, the township has desired to preserve this property, but it had its hands tied by the second-class Township Code because we could only pay an appraised value. As you mentioned, thanks to generosity of this donor and the collaborative effort of township staff, and also the Art Center. We're here today for essentially a tri-party agreement of sale, dealing with the seller, the Corsons, the Wilsons, White Marsh Township, and also White Marsh Art Center. I also want to thank the legal team in my firm that helped me work on this, mainly John Walco, who was involved in a lot of the negotiations around this and really got into the details with both the sellers, the Art Center, and all the parties involved, working hand-in-hand with Rick Miller almost on a daily basis for several months now. So I'd like to turn it over to John to go through the details of the agreement to better illustrate this to the public, as the board has previously had a chance to review this. They may have some additional questions. They've had a chance to look at this before. So, John?
Thank you, Sean. Thank you to the board. So I will just go briefly through the agreement of sale. I know the board is familiar with it. It has been posted for the public review. Essentially, this is an agreement of sale for the Corson Track, which are the buildings and the open space on the property. The amount of purchases is 3.95 million, which is the amount that was the original winning bid. As set forth in a cover memo to this agreement, the opportunity through Providence came back to the township that the original purchase sort of fell apart. So we were offered similar terms, and we worked within the confines of the original agreement to try to make it a better, smoother transition, working with the sellers. This agreement has two major contingencies. The first, which will be resolved quickly, is the standard due diligence period to perform inspections on the property that you would find in any commercial or residential agreement of sale, assuming everything goes smoothly with that inspection, which at this point we anticipated would. The major contingency is the receipt of that gift from the anonymous donor who wishes to remain anonymous at this time. That gift right now doesn't have a timeframe, and it is not contractually obligated to be made. So it is a contingency that is out there. We have no reason to suspect that it won't be made, but again, it's not contractually obligated at this time. So assuming that everything goes well, that gift would then be provided to the Art Center, and the township is purchasing this property with the Art Center. So we will be joint tenants in common or tenants by entiaries. We will have joint ownership and a form to be determined at a later time, at the time of closing. So we're excited to have worked with the Art Center on this agreement. I've spoken with some of the representatives. They have reviewed the agreements. I'm not sure if they've discussed it as their board, but so far, it seems like everything's going well with them. No red flags on the agreement on their side, so it appears that we do have this agreement. It's been approved by the sellers. The township will have to put up $100,000 in deposit, which again would be refundable if those two contingencies don't fall apart and that gift didn't come through. However, township would lose that if we default on the agreement, which is the purpose of the deposit, of course. So this isn't something that's going to happen soon. Again, we need the gift money to come in. I believe the Art Center is going to be working with that donor for gift agreements that are related to this property only, but it's exciting. Everything is moving forward. Since there is a significant amount of time that this property may be open until closing, township's agreeing to permit the current tenants for the leased properties and the current owners to remain on the property after, which is only fair because again, they're agreeing to have this extended, waiting on us. So they can't make their plans for where they're going to go. So we're going to give them a little bit of time afterwards to remain on the property. We've reviewed those leases as well, and they are standard leases. So this is an agreement that is recommended and reviewed and put together by Solicitor's Office for the board's approval.
Thank you, John. I'm sure there are a lot of questions and comments and thoughts. So, you know, I know this is the first time we're coming before the public with this. Let's start with the board. Do we have any comments from the board? And then you guys are welcome to comment later, too, if you are so moved. I'll open it up to the public. So we have, when we open it up to the public here, if everyone could please state their name and address so that we can keep track of for records. Thank you.
Chair Nestor, can I make a suggestion? We have, it's great that we have so many people on Zoom, and it is difficult if people are calling out. If they could just put in the chat, I'd like to make a comment. I'm sure we can recognize each and every person and make it a little bit more orderly as opposed to everybody. We won't recognize who's, you know, requesting a comment if they're just all yelling out. So if you understand the chat feature, you could just say, "I'd like to make a comment," and Chair Nestor can then recognize you. And as she said, just stating your name and address for the record, that would be great. Thank you.
Yes. Ann Wilson would like to make a comment from the owners.
How you doing? This is Roy Wilson. How you doing? My name's Roy Wilson, 4006 Butler Pike. That's the Abolition Hall property. My wife Ann and I have lived here for more than 40 years. We are both artists and have used Abolition Hall as our art studio for most of our careers. During that time, we have done our best to maintain these very old historic buildings, despite a heavy real estate tax burden, now $26,000 a year. We have conducted numerous free tours to individual groups and the public. Nancy Corson and I applied for the State Historical Marco U.C. on Butler Pike, and I installed it. While we will be sad to leave, we are primarily concerned that no road be built through the center of this historic area. We are aware the township staff, as well as county, state, and PennDOT planners, as well as many local residents, all would like to remove the dog leg at this intersection and straighten the road by routing it between the historic buildings. We hope that will not be allowed to happen. History is rich here with a legacy that resonates up to the present day. This property is a placeholder for the history of the Malsby and Corson families and by extension, the very history of Plymouth Meeting itself. The Malsbys and Corsons ran the local general store here, started a lending library, helped found the anti-slavery movement here. They were farmers, builders, doctors, and served with distinction in the Civil War. George Corson and Martha Malsby Corson were passionate anti-slavery advocates for decades before the Civil War. George Corson attended the Anti-Slavery Free Soil Party Convention in Buffalo, New York in 1848. They were faithful subscribers to both the Anti-Slavery Standard and the Liberator newspapers. The Corsons were tasked in 1855 by James Mott with protecting escaped slave Jane Johnson in his celebrated case in Philadelphia. The Corsons opened their home in Plymouth Meeting, now known as the Hovenden House, to many abolitionist speakers of the day. Families escaping slavery on the Underground Railroad were often housed and fed in the family home and likely transported in wagons from the barn to the next stop on the railroad. Abolition Hall itself is in many ways more of a symbol than a site of the abolition movement. Abolitionists were despised by many Americans before the Civil War. Many Americans saw slavery as more of a political issue. George Corson wanted to build Abolition Hall. It was referred to then as Anti-Slavery Hall. It's a non-denominational hall on his own property where all members of the general public could come to hear abolitionist speakers, but he died only a couple of years after it was built. In addition to abolition, George Corson was an early adherent to the temperance movement. At a time when lime-killin' builders expected to receive part of their pay in liquor, Corson refused to permit this practice. The Corsons were also supporters of the suffragist movement and subscribed to the Revolution, published by Susan B. Anthony and Elizabeth Cady Stanton. The Corson family had many doctors, and Hyrum Corson championed the rights for women to be allowed into the medical profession at a time when this was opposed by most male doctors. In the 1890s, Hyrum wrote a birthday note to the young son of Thomas Hovenden. After wishing him a happy birthday, he urges his young relative to remember to support the rights of women, noting that men who immigrate into America have the right to vote, but your mother, who was born here, cannot vote. We are excited to think the White Marsh Art Center might participate in this proposal. The history of art is rich here. Any artist who walks into the second floor of Abolition Hall instantly recognizes it as a desirable artist's studio. Thomas Hovenden, in his day, was one of the most famous artists in America. Among his many paintings, his painting of abolitionist John Brown being led to the gallows is an iconic image of the abolitionist movement. Although painted after the Civil War, it is an image commonly found in history books. His painting, Breaking Home Ties, was renowned across the country. Hovenden also often used local residents, both black and white, as models for his paintings. To this day, you can still look out the large window of the hall and see the spire of Cold Point Church, just as Hovenden painted it in the 1890s. Hovenden himself was an Irish immigrant to America, marrying into the Corson family. His wife, Helen Corson Hovenden, was an extremely talented painter in her own right and also used Abolition Hall as her studio.
Yeah.
They counted his friends many famous painting artists of the day, including William Picknell, Augustus St. Gottes, Daniel Chester French, John Boyle, and John Sartain. Their daughter, Martha Malsby Hovenden, was a stone sculptor, unusual for an artist in those days, a woman to be a sculptor, who also made the hall her studio. She likewise made friends with noted artists of the period, including Paula Bolano, Edith Emerson, and Violet Oakley. Although I could talk for hours about the rich history of this property, which I'll be sad to leave, I'll close with a quote from Irish-born Thomas Hovenden in 1891, discussing his emphasis on painting American subject matter. I'm quoting. "I believe I am a more intensely American than any man in the profession. I am an American by adoption. I will die an American." "I think no one appreciates what it is to live in this country, to live in this country until he has had a taste of some other country." Thanks. Thank you.
Roy, thank you beyond words for that. I would greatly appreciate, if you have that written, if we could have a copy of that for our records to go along with tonight's meeting, but to just have on file. That was beautifully said, and we can't thank you enough. And certainly appreciate how attached you are to the property and appreciate your care for everything. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well said.
Thank you. I see Cynthia Turner. Oh, I missed.
Thank you. I will be brief, but I just wanted to, I am in, I'm not going to disclose my full address because that's confidential, but I am on Chestnut Street in Norristown, West Norristown. I grew up in Plymouth Meeting. I did want to recognize, and if I missed it so far in this meeting, if there was recognition and gratitude sent toward the Friends of Abolition Hall, I perhaps missed that. So I just wanted to include that. These are the citizens that have been pushing for this for several years, headed up by Sedell Zove. These are the citizens that have been pushing for this for several years headed up by Sedell Zove. She has worked tirelessly along with many other people. Especially at a time when several years ago, White Marsh Township was not interested in getting the property and we unfortunately were fighting White Marsh Township. I was at least one of those meetings in person. I am glad that in the past two or three years or whatever it may be that White Marsh Township did have a change of mind and took much more seriously the purchase and preservation and protection of this property. It's, I, I hope things progress forward. And I hope we can move further and further away from the dark spot on history that we were about to cause by allowing building on that property. So again, I just wanted to give another shout out to Sedell and the Friends of Abolition Hall. Thank you.
Thank you Cynthia. Yes, thank you for mentioning that. And certainly we acknowledge and appreciate all that Sedell and the Friends of Abolition Hall have, have contributed. Sarah Varney, did you want to make a comment? I know you had something in the chat, but I didn't know if you also wanted to comment. So I'm going to move on. David Miller.
Hello. My name's David Miller. Speaking for myself, but I think also for the monthly meeting, the quicker meeting on the corner there. I would have a very grateful heart tonight. I'd like to, to thank Anne and Roy for those many, many years of care. Education that they, they did for the property, for all the people that came on the property, for Nancy Corson. I'm just very grateful that they have maintained this, this living legacy for us. And it really does rest in the last decades on, on their shoulders. So my thankfulness to them. My thankfulness to the supervisors and the people that I won't even know that quietly went about taking the ideas of a community and making them a reality with the help of a anonymous person. But I'm sure that the conversations that were required to meet the needs of both the family, the township, the art building, and all those expressions that were made in countless meetings by the community. I thank you for your skill, your gift, your patience to bring this into fruition. And finally, I'd say there is a bit more just to tie up the strings to make this reality. But then, what is the next life of the property? And that will be the township, the community, individuals with great gifts that step forward to make this more than just buildings and land. How will it be for our students in the, in the high school? How would it be for the, the children, the parents that come onto the property for both recreation, but then to begin to learn how the history of the past informs us how to be today? There's a huge opportunity, but a tremendous amount of work to be done once all the legal stuff is, is completed. So I look forward to new faces coming up in the, in the community, from the schools, from the various groups of the community. So we can take the learnings of the past of how the Corsons provided hospitality and openness in a very angry world. And we can take that into that loving hospitality and education into our very angry and divided world and learn how to be one with another. I am just so grateful. My heart is so full when I heard this, this news this week. And with that, I just, one more time, say thank you.
David. Sedell Zove.
Good evening. Sedell Zove, Hearts Ridge Road. I want to open by saying amen and hallelujah. I also want to quote from another artist from the 1960s, a visionary artist who said, it's been a long time coming. And if I could sing, I would sing the song, but I can't sing. This is, this news fills my heart with joy. As I know it does everyone on this, on this Zoom call. And I see the smiles. And I'm eternally grateful to everyone who has helped to make this happen. I'm especially grateful to this board of supervisors who had the determination and the vision to see this through. I know there's still some contingencies. I've got my fingers crossed and my toe. And I want to thank the Wilsons, especially, especially Roy Wilson, who I know had a hand, a direct hand to hand in helping to physically preserve the structures. I've seen newspaper stories. I've seen his picture going back 40 years. He and other family members on ladders, on scaffolding, pointing, stuccoing, repairing the woodwork. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I also want to thank the Wilsons for, for saving and loving and respecting all the incredible archival documentary history of this extraordinary household, this family and this site. I was fortunate enough to participate in a tour sponsored by the Friends Meeting some years ago. And you, boy, you had lovingly displayed many of the documents that you alluded to earlier and others. It was an extraordinary experience looking at those documents, one I will never forget. I do want to second, set the record straight. Cynthia Turner, I appreciate, deeply appreciate your comment. However, I do want to point out that this township made an effort as far back as 2013 to acquire this homestead. The township amended its open space plan, which is part of a comprehensive plan to make acquisition of this homestead a priority. Unfortunately, by the time that happened, the developers were at the doorstep with their bags of gold and the township could not compete. That agreement of sale was, with the developer was signed in 2015. And miracle of miracles, and we almost always hold out hope, miracle of miracles, that developer packed up and took his shekels elsewhere. I believe that the Friends of Abolition Hall helped make that happen in an indirect way. We fought the good fight. We helped to lift up the history of this homestead in the community and before the board of supervisors. And then COVID had a role probably as well. Clearly it was a business decision. We'll never know the reasons why, but good riddance. And thank you, White Marsh Township for stepping in and collaborating with the art center. Let's not forget the art center to bring this, this, this agreement to this point today. I love the fact that the art center will occupy some portion of the homestead. It is a wonderful continuation of that extraordinary connection to the world of art. And I appreciate that that will happen. And I just want to say that I personally and, and also speaking on behalf of the Friends of Abolition Hall. We are here to help in any way possible to bring this deal to fruition. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sedell. Let's see, I'm trying to scroll through Gary Kaplan.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
I will leave his, this will be very short. I will leave history to the historians and those who knew it. I do want to thank the board of supervisors. I will thank you in person if I see you and I thank you here today. I had been critical of the board of supervisors in the past, but it's, this event is wonderful. And I greatly appreciate all the efforts each of you have given us and given the township and enabled this day to come to pass. And so on behalf of a very thankful public, I thank each of you for all of your parts in bringing this about. It'll be that this property will be there long after we have all passed and it'll be a tribute for the efforts that you have made to make this a better community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Tam?
Yes, Tam Politz, Edmunds Road. I concur with all these wonderful comments. I'm so, so excited that this is happening and thank you so much for everyone who brought this together. And I want to just make another comment to thank all of the boards and commissions, all the members present and past who sat through all of the, the comments and the controversy. It was a long, difficult experience for so many people in the community and in the administration. And I'm certainly sure it must have been difficult for the Wilsons as well. And and I'm so happy that we've been able to come to a conclusion like this. That's, that's going to be the best thing for all of us. And thank you to everyone. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Tam. And I believe Roy, you had another comment?
Yeah, thank you. I gotta take great exception to the shekels comment. I know it sounds funny to Sidell and whatnot, but to set the record straight. We approached the township, Anne and I, 10 years ago, we tried to get the township to buy the, our fields for open space because of the tremendous cost of maintaining the property and paying the very high taxes. We're only one third owners here. We tried to get the township to buy just the fields so we could continue to maintain the property and, you know, continue the tours. I want to point out that our property was zoned by White Marsh Township in the 1970s for townhouses. Which gave, it gave us a tax assessment based on the tax assessors of eight townhouses per acre when they valued our land for taxes. We had hoped by approaching the township, we could reduce the heavy tax burden by getting rid of the fields and just maintaining the buildings. We waited for a year for the township to respond to our, to our request. And then it finally came in way below what the property was worth. We knew the other two owners were never going to accept it. So we moved on to the developer. I take great exception to Sidell's comment that the owners are waiting for shekels to arrive from heaven. We would, it's an insulting comment and I, and I, and I resent it. And I would like to follow up by saying a couple of very false misleading characterizations that her group has made about our property over the years. It's been really difficult for a landowner to sit quietly. We're not narcissists. We don't sit around talking about what we've done here. We haven't publicized ourselves. We don't have a website like she had. I'd like to say in particular, some of the most egregious things that have been said about this property. Our property is not riddled with sinkholes as was alleged. You know, we sinkhole anywhere near our property is on the neighbor's property, which is now bordering our, you know, the edge of our property. There were no tunnels into abolition hall, which were alleged, nor has there ever been any oral tradition, the tunnels were ever here. Escaping slaves from the Underground Railroad never hid in cornfields next to abolition hall. It just never happened. That was pasture land. Those seeking freedom here were housed in the Huffington House and often ate meals with a family. It's an insult to make this statement that slaves hid in the cornfields next to abolition hall. The courses never would have allowed that. They were here to protect escaping slaves, not to leave them standing in a cornfield next to abolition hall. It's an insult. And these are comments that we had to listen to for years from some of these members. I'm sorry for saying all this. We feel strongly about the importance of the history here. I don't want it to be, you know, reduced by people who want to use it for political purposes. I respect Sidell's efforts on all of her members in trying to save the property. I wish we'd never had to put it up for sale. If we could have bought out our siblings, we would have, but you know, we're not, we're not rich lawyers. $26,000 a year in taxes is a lot of money. Maybe not to some people, but for normal people, it's a lot of money. I'd like to point out, just so that some of you people don't know about it. When you put a property on a historical register, insurance companies won't insure it. There's a lot of insurance companies that have a line on their questionnaire. Is your property historically certified? If you say yes, they, it's canceled. So we have to get insurance. It costs a lot more because that's what happens when you publicly historically certify your property. After all this, I love the idea that the township and the art center could acquire this property. I'm happy about it. Really, the only reservation I have at all is that township's township staff and county planners don't put a road between these two buildings, which is what was anticipated. And that did not come from the developers. It came from staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. Do we have any other comments here? Okay. Well, I'm going to move to.
Laura, I think Ms. Child wanted to have a comment.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Go ahead, Celine.
This is a banner day for White Marsh. I am so overwhelmed with gratitude that this finally has occurred. And I pray to God that you're going to be the happiest people to have this wonderful, wonderful relic among our possessions. I'm going to offer my help in any way, shape or form. I'm an old lady now, but I still have, I'm standing on my feet. So I really want to help in whatever way I can to make this a success. God bless you all and thank you.
Thank you, Celine. Did I miss anybody else? Do we have any other comments? Okay, any board comments at this time? All right. So I'm actually going to read the motion. Do I have a motion to approve the agreement of sale between Anne Wilson, Margaret Stevens and Thomas Hopkins, having an address at 4006 Butler Pike and White Marsh Township and the White Marsh Community Art Center in the amount of $3.95 million, subject to the terms and conditions set forth in the agreement of sale?
Moved.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion joyfully carries. Thank you, White Marsh. Thank you again for everybody on the call, everybody not on the call and just very excited to have this move forward to step two. I feel like that should be it and we should wrap up the meeting, but we do have more on the agenda tonight. Not nearly as exciting. Do I have a motion to approve the public bid for the interstate from the interstate for the cleaning contract for both the administration and police, the amount of $2,221.90 per month? Then moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. Yes, this, this does not, this is tough follow up to that, talking about a cleaning contract, but nonetheless, it is township business and we've had a cleaner here for the last about four years. And we wanted to go out, their contractor was up, they was just going basically month to month at this point. And uh we wanted to go out, uh, their contract goes up, it was just going basically month to month at this point, and wanted to go out and uh see what uh other uh costs were and other contracts were and so on. And we were pleased to get a very positive response in, in the public bidding process. It was done online through Penn Bid, which is a very popular place for contractors and vendors to go to obtain uh public bids. Uh, they were opened last uh Friday and uh interstate uh was the lowest. Interstate has some experience in working with other municipalities. Most closely to us is Upper Dublin Township, and they have reported that they are very pleased with their services. They'll be performing the cleaning at this primary building, which is the administration building and the police department.
Thank you. Do we have any board comment? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 You got you all, okay, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve a hold harmless agreement for signs in the ultimate right of way at eleven hundred East Hector Street, Spring, Spring Mill Corporate Center?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Miller?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair Nestor. Uh, th- this is an extension of a zoning approval that was granted back in September of 2020 for the Spring Mill Corporate Center. And the reason for the granting that was a new signage package uh for the owners of Spring Mill Corporate Center where they will be uh promoting, I guess, their, their new signs throughout the entire complex. When we were reviewing the permit, there were a couple of signs that front along North Lane and Hector that were in the ultimate right of way. As a result, and when we have this occur, we have the township engineer and the police department, they go out and review the location of the signs from a site distance perspective. They were okay and supportive of the locations of those signs. Therefore, a hold harmless agreement is needed in order for them to move forward in their permit application process and to install their signage package. And I, I certainly, if you'd like, I could uh share that if, if you'd like here. There with me one sec. Scrolling fast, I just want to get to the uh. Uh, there's a lot of different signs that are in here, but the signage that you'll see that are, that for this hold harmless agreement, there is one that is going to be at the entrance off of Hector that will look like so. There is another that will be off the entrance of North Lane. That will look like so. And then another one on Hector that will look like so. So those are the, the signs, these were signage package was approved that, as I said, the zoning hearing board, and that's just the visual for everyone to see.
Thanks, Rick, it is helpful to see the visual of it. Uh, do we have any board comments? Any public comments? I mean, it all seems like a great idea, certainly to help promote better understanding and walkability, move, movability uh in the area, so I think that is great. Um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Hey, motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling nine hundred and eighty-five thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and fifteen cents and payroll totaling six hundred and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-six dollars and one cent and pension paid costs totaling four thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents for March twenty twenty-one?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Any comments? Order public? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda? So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wonderful, thank you. We have two additional items on our amended agenda tonight. The first uh is real, related to uh real estate tax. Do I have a motion to authorize the order and settlement stipulation between Hanson and Beck? Five fifty-two nineteen and fifty-two twenty twenty-one, Belisha Hill Road versus Monaco Board of Assessment Appeals, resulting in the decrease in the assessment between the twenty eighteen and twenty twenty, requiring a repayment of eight hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents in township real estate taxes?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Uh, thank you, Chair Nestor, as we have been doing over the past several meetings, uh, the Board of Assessment Appeals is hearing these cases and actually settling a lot of these cases that have been outstanding and, and on their docket, and this is another one of those cases. Um, and in which the assessed value has been decreased uh based on the settlement agreement for real estate taxes to the township that impacts us over the years of twenty eighteen to twenty twenty in the amount of eight hundred dollars and eighty-eight cents. That is an overpayment and a repayment to the property owner. So that was approved and agreed upon by the Board of Assessment Appeals and will have to be agreed upon by all the other taxing bodies, including the school district and the county.
Very good, thank you, Rick. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Wonderful. Motion carries, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between White Marsh Township and the Public Works Association, which extends the current terms of the contract for years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor, yes, this is, uh, we've been working with the Public Works Association as their contract had expired at the end of twenty twenty in an effort to renegotiate this contract after several meetings with them. Uh, the board offered them an extension of the, their current contract and the terms uh for two years until twenty twenty-two, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Uh, they have agreed to that memorandum of understanding was provided to them with those terms. They have signed it and returned it, and it is before you for your consideration. We think that this is a fair deal for both the township and the Public Works Association, and just would like to thank their collective bargaining uh team for their efforts uh in working out uh this deal.
Excellent, thank you, and Rick, thank you for your time involved in working on this with them. Is there any, do we have any board comments? Any public comments? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Wonderful, motion carries. And that is our agenda for tonight, so I'm gonna move to public comment period. Do we have any additional public comments?
If people could do the same thing, only because there is still a lot of people on, if they could just, yep, put it.
I want to say, what, hip, hip, hooray!
Thank you, Celine. I know it's kind of like not exciting to move on to the day-to-day operations after, after that kind of vote.
There is one comment there, Chair Nestor, there's a couple of comments that folks.
Okay, is that Tam? Was that first or was that from the last?
That, that's, that's right, you're right.
Okay, uh, Tam?
Hi, um, Tam Politz, Edmunds Road. Um, I, I just wanted to make another comment about some shade tree issues and, and um, first of all, I'll say that I, I was at the Tuesday night Shade Tree Meeting and I, I was upset by the outcome of what's going on with the Knowles Development. And I am flustered. And I got a little head under the collar today. And I've um sent in an email to all of you on the board and, and some of you in the administration, and I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm still very concerned about the tree issues between the Knowles Development and the Veterans Memorial. And um, but I, I was, I was uh set straight today. Somebody pointed out to me that I made a mistake, and I want to acknowledge that. Um, when it comes to the fifty percent rule, I, I misunderstood the, the difference between the job site and the lot. So I do want to back down on that one and admit a mistake. Um, at the same time, I, I want to say that it is so frustrating when I see one thing after another, and I know that you don't have control over every single thing that happens. So I'm, I'm really hoping that all of you will continue to monitor what's going on at all of the, the developments. I've got all the work that's being done around the township, but particularly with the Veterans Monument. There are so many people who care so much about it, and it was so difficult that um I'm really hoping that we can get the best possible result there. I, I wanted to say um in addition that I, I'm still concerned that the plans have really changed significantly since they were approved. And I'm hoping that you'll be able to procure a, another finished plan that shows all of the trees that will be replaced there and the locations. Um, since the tulip poplar tree was saved, the location for the replacement trees can't go in that location, obviously, they have to go elsewhere. And since the root protection zones haven't really been um figured out in relative to the planting, I'm still very concerned about that, and I'm hoping that we can be certain that all of the trees will fit in there the way that they were planned to. And if not, bring it back to the Shade Tree Commission again for another look to see what, what can be done to make sure that it's all done right. So I, like I said, it's, it's been a confusing and long process. Um, and I, I want to also say that I'm just so grateful to be part of the Chapter Fifty-Five rewrite. And obviously, it's, it's got a lot of ambiguities in there. I couldn't understand it myself. So I'm hoping that um the changes that we make to Chapter Fifty-Five is going to make all of this easier and, and reduce all this angst between us. And um I look forward to working with you all more in the future, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tam. Uh, Steve Kaufman?
Yeah, I have, I have two, two thoughts, I'll be brief. Oh, one is that uh I've worked with Tam on a lot of uh shade tree issues. And I can understand her frustration and uh I recall once myself rushing to the front of a planning commission meeting to the dais and uh handing uh a memo from the Shade Tree Commission while the attorney for, of Nannian was saying, this is totally improper. So I just can understand the notion of getting kind of heated. And I, I, she, she reads things close, closely and carefully, and I'm really glad she's on the group that's reviewing the ordinance. The second point, which will just take a minute, uh involves a prior agenda item, but I hope I can be allowed one minute to say something positive, Laura, about Abolition Hall. I am very, very happy that the township is taking such a daring position and going out and signing an agreement of sale and spending fees and uh going out on a bit of a limb, even though there's some uncertainties. And I hope that we all think about the uh heritage of this site uh that involves uh let's say, nonviolent resistance to evil, an evil that was still deeply embedded in our society. And the, the history of nonviolence in, in America often has a religious root. And I think it's important we recognize that this uh origin and the small sect of Quakers, I happen to be a member, but not a very good Quaker. But this also fills a void that I felt with the Veterans Monument. As important as that monument is, there's no way could you celebrate the many residents of this of this community who have been contentious objectors, who have objected to war and injustice. So I'm glad that we are deserving of a site that, you know, recognizes that side of American history. It's a very important and unrecognized side. So this huge amount of gratitude to the township and you, you folks for stepping out and going out on a limb here.
Thank you, Steve. Do we have any other comments tonight? Seeing none, I will announce that we did have executive session tonight where we spoke about litigation, personnel and real estate. Did I capture everything? Okay, cool. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all again, and good night, White Marsh, enjoy the, the evening, thank you.